Good evening, everyone. If everybody could take a seat so we could get started, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Wantagh Board of Education's Business Meeting for February 6th. We're gonna begin, we're gonna call the meeting order, we'll begin with a salute to the flag, and then a moment of silence for Carol Anne Siffaletti, mother of David Siffaletti.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Communications to the Board of Ed, we received communications from Thomas Fields, Troop 656, and C Superintendent's report, we'll turn that over to you, Ms. MacMara.
Great, good evening, everyone, thank you, Ms. Cassidy, welcome to our board meeting, I'm John McMahon, Superintendent of Schools, welcome to everyone tonight. I always like to start with some good news, so I'm gonna invite up Mr. Chiffo, our middle school principal, we have some of our middle school students here tonight. We had something take place over at the middle school called our Read and Play Initiative, which was really just a nice series of events at Wantagh Middle School. I'm gonna have Mr. Chiffo come on up to the mic and just tell you a little bit about it, and then we're gonna recognize several of our middle school students as well, so Mr. Chiffo.
Hi, everybody, thanks for a few minutes tonight. So, this past fall, as Mr. McMahon said, the middle school library hosted an event called Read and Play Across the USA. Our IMC clerical, Mary De Gregorio, along with our school librarian, Ms. Amelie Weber, created and led an interactive initiative to celebrate each of the 50 states of the United States of America. The library offered 50 games, and 50 different games and reading activities, each activity representing one of the 50 states. Students, on their own time, worked to completing as many activities as they could for a chance to win a grand prize. This evening, we want to celebrate and congratulate the outstanding efforts of four of our students. They passionately used their free time to complete as many enrichment activities as they could, and their enthusiasm and hard work is what is being recognized this evening. Each of the four students were recognized by the United States House of Representatives in the form of a well-deserved citation. Before we recognize the four students, I also want to offer a special thank you to Mr. Gregorio and Ms. Weber for their work in organizing this initiative, and for their passion that they both show in creating fun and engaging activities in our school's Instructional Media Center.
Thank you.
All right, now for our students, when I call your name up, I'm gonna call all four, and you can all come up and get your citation, and then we'll do a, guess, a group picture? Right? All right, so congratulations to Audrey Aneese, Brin Crutzberger, Cory Grantis, and they get to go up on the stage, cool. Congratulations Cory. And Taylor Shara. Thank you, everybody, congratulations again to all four of you.
All right, congratulations once again to our middle school students, really nice job, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it. One of the things we're gonna be doing a little bit later on our agenda is we're gonna be accepting some resignations this evening for the purpose of retirement, as has been our custom in our February meeting, we're recognizing members of our teaching staff that are gonna be retiring at the end of the year. I don't know if it's something I said or did, but we have a large number of people that are retiring this year. We have 10 teachers in total that are gonna be leaving the district with a combined 290 years of service to the Wantagh School District, which is incredible, so yeah. So, we wanted to recognize those folks, and we want to thank them for attending, seven of the teachers are in attendance tonight, so I'm gonna start with Jennifer Alessi, yeah, please. Jen has over 30 years of service here in the district, she's attending tonight along with her husband Dan. She joined the district in 1994, actually started, did a leave replacement, I think, from Mindy Dragovich, back in February of 94, after graduating from Mansfield University in Pennsylvania in 1992, and then did such a great job, was quickly appointed in September of that year to a probationary position. I think she has had the distinct pleasure of working at all levels of our district, from high school, middle school, and elementary school, K to 12, she's done it all, and has done an outstanding job for us. I'm always impressed when I attend the concerts that Jen does, just the professionalism, what she is able to get out of our choral students each and every year is always truly impressive, and always with a smile, and just is such a great job for us. And all the, all the little extras that she has done for her program, whether it's students singing in the mall, or organizing trips, and all the various events, and then, you know, more recently at the elementary level, from Flag Day ceremonies to Moving Up ceremonies, and even the state song, which is always, always very impressive. So, I just want to thank her for all of her efforts throughout, throughout the years, and I, this kinda, I think summed up something, as I looked through Jen's file last week, in her, on her applicant statement back in 1994, she wrote, "I feel certain that the field of education and music, and bettering students' awareness of music and the arts, is the path I wish to follow in a career that I hope will last a lifetime." Well, not quite a lifetime, but over 30 years, and I think you accomplished just that, Jen, so congratulations, and please come up for a little plaque we have for you. All right, next, Michelle Anselovic, fourth grade teacher at Forest Lake Elementary School, she has had 34 years of service here in the district, tending with her husband Daniel, Dan, and her daughter Rachel tonight, so welcome to them as well, thank you for being here. So, Michelle, after, joined the district in 1991, started as first grade teacher at Mandalay for a number of years before taking some leave time, and then ultimately landing at Forest Lake, where she's been in fourth grade forever, and has been just a mainstay there for us. When I first arrived here 10 years ago, one of the things that I was so impressed with was the flexible seating setup in Michelle's classroom, before flexible seating was even a thing, right? It wasn't even a thing yet, it was just kinda becoming a thing, and there were couches, and there were, it was just like, I just wanted to go in there and hang out, like, it would just seem so comfortable, and Michelle just has that kinda nurturing way about her with her students, and creates that warm, positive classroom atmosphere, and really always at the forefront of wanting to do new and different things instructionally. I think that's something that she's really brought to the district, and been such a stable leader in the fourth grade for us at Forest Lake for all those years, and has impacted, you know, the lives of hundreds of students in her time here, so I want to thank her for all of her hard work, her dedication, and congratulations, we wish you all the best in your retirement. All right, Georgia's up next, Georgia Gonyas, yes, please. Georgia, also over 30 years of service, 31 years of service to the district, joined us in 1994, 1994, '95, she did a full year leave, did an outstanding job, that quickly turned into a probationary position over at Forest Lake, where she was for the first number of years in her career, before ultimately transitioning over to the middle school, where she has been in the world of sixth grade ever since, and one of the things that kinda stood out, kinda taking a look at the work that she's done here, when you look at all of her evaluations, year in, year out, same words pop up over and over again, compassionate, collaborative, being there to support her students, being there for all the team activities and her colleagues. And I came across this letter that was written by one of our, one of our parents and placed in her file, that I thought was really kinda sum things up for her, talking about her daughter progressing very nicely, I've been so happy throughout the course of the year because of my child's teacher. She has provided opportunities for my daughter to shine, she has also created an environment that has made it easy for her to excel. I know that she will be one of those teachers that my daughter will always remember, and has put her on such a great path for success. I think that sums it up, so congratulations to Georgia, and we wish you all the best. All right, Dina Wang, all right, Dina. So, also a member of our music department, our whole music department is leaving us. Dina has been with us since September of 1992, like her colleague Jen, has taught at all three levels, middle school, high school, and now over at Wantagh L., and always just, you know, the energy and enthusiasm she's brought to her program at the high school level, kinda like the Rock Edge Orchestra that she has brought to, to her program was always impressive, and much like Jen, all the work that she's put into organizing events, special events for the music students here in the district has always, always been impressive. She, also in terms of, you know, making an adjustment to, to elementary life, you know, big transition over the past couple of years, and she has done so seamlessly, and, you know, continued to attract students to our orchestra program at Wantagh L., so I want to thank her for her dedicated service, 33 years of service to the district, and wish her all the best in the future. All right, Nancy O'Connor, it's up next, Wantagh Middle School, also worked at multiple levels here in the, in the, in the district, she's here tonight with her husband John, and children Anthony and Molly. Joined the district as a special educator in 1995, and one of the things that, you know, certainly stands out about Nancy is her involvement in the school community as a whole. I think, you know, seeing her at sporting events, seeing at the, her at events outside of the school day that her children were involved in, just going that extra step, and she was also really instrumental in really establishing a strong resource room, resource room program for our district, and worked tirelessly in that, in that program, and now more recently, you know, transitioning over to the middle school, which I reap the benefit of, because Nancy makes an outstanding pumpkin cheesecake, and my, yeah, and my office is not far from her classroom, so I reap the benefit of that this year. But, you know, Nancy does such a great job of, you know, keeping open lines of communication with parents and families, keeping them informed, making them feel comfortable, and supporting some of our neediest students in the district, and, and does so seamlessly. She's a great asset that we're certainly gonna miss, and also, you know, just supporting her colleagues, you know, actively working in, as a member of the WT for many years, and supporting her colleagues through many different things, and just being an advocate for them as well. So, I just want to congratulate her on a, on a great career here, and wish her all the best in the future. All right, and then Tom Verlaine, Tom has a growing list of people that are here, yes. Tom's here with his wife Gail, his parents, John and Frank, and I think there were some additional siblings that arrived as well, so welcome to all of you. So, congratulations to Tom, Tom, 32 years of service in the district, began in the 93, 94 school year, when he joined after graduating from St. John's, did a leave replacement at Wantagh L. in fifth grade, was quickly hired the following year, and then ultimately transitions to the middle school, and I believe 1996, a couple of years later, and has never left, has been there ever since, grade six, and just done a great job there connecting with our kids. I wanted to get Tom a really good gift for his retirement, so I called my friend Steve Cohen last night, and I said, "Listen, can you sign Pete Alonso, please, so, so Tom can finally sleep?" One of the things Tom and I share in common is we're avid met fans, and so I hope that was a nice retirement gift for you, yes, you're welcome. One of the nice things at, certainly at the middle school level, particularly in sixth grade, is having a male educator that our, our boys can really connect with, and that's one thing that Tom does really well, connecting with our students, and really helping with that transition from, from middle school to, to high, from elementary to middle school. Tom also, you know, has worked tirelessly to support the teachers of the WT. My first year as superintendent, I believe, was a contract negotiation year, so Tom and I got to have some spirited conversations around that, that topic, but always an advocate for, for his, his staff to support them, and also always really, you know, great lines of communication to, in terms of working with him during that time. I always appreciated, you know, our open and honest conversations about things that were going on. So, just a leader of teachers, advocate for our kids, and just, you know, his dedicated service to the district over the past 30-plus years has been outstanding. We wish him nothing but the best in, in his retirement, and, and all the best to his family as well. All right, Beth, Beth Marinus is also from our music department, is retiring as well. Beth has worked at our elementary and middle school level, and over 25 years of service to the district, I believe. Beth, one of the things that I'm gonna miss is her CD player. Every concert, I, I didn't know they still had CD players, but they do, if you ever need one, Beth has it. She, it's present at, at all of her concerts, but has done a really, really outstanding job with our choral program, similarly to what I said earlier about Jen, you know, the life of a choral teacher at the elementary level, everything involves a song, and she is there to support all those different events, in, in terms of that, from our Flag Days to, to our Moving Up ceremonies, and, and has our students ready to go and prepared for those, and it just has such great turnouts in, in terms of her, her course, and the number of students that have participated. I'm always amazed at how you can get, I think even at her most recent concert, she commented on the 90-plus students, I believe, that were part of that, that ensemble, and, and what a great job she did with them. So, we thank her for all that she has, has brought, including, you know, participating in the shows at Wantagh L. as of late, and, and everything she's brought to the district, so congratulations to Beth. All right, congratulations, everyone, that's what 290 years of service looks like, we'll recognize Chris Rafferty, who was unable to be here tonight, he has a swim meet, we're gonna recognize him at our March meeting as well, so, once again, congratulations to all of our retiring staff. One other update from me before I turn it back over to Ms. Cassidy, budget-wise, we have all of our upcoming forums, so just for the community to note, March 10th and 24th will be our first couple of budget forums, and then April 1st and 2nd, so we hope people are available to attend those, also be on the lookout for our budget survey that'll come out after the February break, as well as opportunities for our budget focus groups, so, we're gonna go to our business portion of the meeting, so those of you that would like to exit now is a great time to do so. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. So, we'll just continue on, D1, approval of minutes, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
E, financial reports, is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
F personnel, F1, approval of personnel items, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
G1, health service agreement, G2 memorandum of agreement, WSA, G3, termination of contracts, G4, use of funds from insurance reserve, is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
G5, budget increase, G6, extra classroom activity charter, G7, donation, the Board of Education approves a donation from the Forest Lake Elementary School PTA of $649 for an assembly laser. of six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for an assembly laser reader PARP program, an interactive show that improves reading comprehension by fostering imagination and logic. The Wanta Board of Education would like to thank the Forest Lake PTA for their generous donation. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I-one, approval of committees on special education and preschool education recommendations, I-two, recognition of religious holidays two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, I-three, school calendar two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, and I-four, Wanta Public Library vote, is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there is no new business. So we're gonna move on to J, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're gonna move on to our organizational reports. Our student government is first.
Hello, everyone, my name is Danny Doniu.
And my name is Isabella Kugal, and we are your student body presidents for the two-thousand twenty-four, two-thousand twenty-five school year.
Um, we'll first start off with our sports teams. Um, they've had a lot of success this winter season. Boys' basketball specifically is in good shape for playoffs, along with girls' basketball, black basketball and boys' wrestling, who have also qualified. Additionally, our winter track team recently had counties this past Monday, where they had a lot of success on both the boys' and girls' side, and, um, Owen Stacklick specifically was our county champion on the boys' side. We wish all of the teams the best of luck for the remainder of their seasons.
This week, student government helped Heather Jones in decorating the school showcase for Black History Month. This year, we specifically highlighted African-American women who have made significant impacts in the past on American society. Additionally, we started our Valentine's Day raffle, which will continue until next Friday. Students are encouraged to take a photo of themselves doing a kind gesture, scan a QR code hung up around the school, and upload that photo with a description of the kind act. From there, they will be entered into a raffle, where they have the opportunity to win a gift basket filled with gift cards, sweet treats, and more. Photos will be posted on our Instagram, Wanta General Organization.
The orchestra department recently held their annual orchestra day, where students from all three elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school played together. Elementary and middle school students were split up into sections and were guided by high school students in practicing the music. The theme this year was Broadway slash musical theater. Everyone had an amazing time. Also, the high school band will be sponsoring its annual band day with the theme of The Jungle on Saturday, February eighth. High school band students will have the opportunity to teach and play with elementary school students and encourage them to have a continued interest in band. On top of that, this Saturday, the science Olympiads will be, team will be competing in their regional competition. Uh, they have been working very hard and we wish them the best of luck.
Next week, we'll be holding another Spirit Week with themes such as Pyjama Day and Wanta Wear Day. Students are highly encouraged to participate, as participation will be tracked and accounted for towards Battle of the Classes, which is almost a month away in March. Thank you so much for letting us give you an insight on what is happening this February within the student body.
We hope you all have a happy Valentine's Day and a great February break, and we look forward to the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mellon, Danny. Forest Lake PTA?
Evening, I'm filling in for the PTA tonight. Um, so last night, fifth grade hosted their paint night at Forest Lake. Um, on the twenty-sixth, they're hosting a skate-a-thon at United Skates. Uh, currently, PARP is ongoing right now, it's for two weeks. Um, the first week, they're doing a book fairies drive, um, and then next week, we will have our annual book fair with night shopping on February twelfth. They're doing a campfire read-along. Um, they're gonna also be doing Flow Society Shorts, that will be going out next week. They have a New York Islanders Assembly upcoming with Sparky the Mascot in March. Um, the Variety Show, which is the big event, uh, is coming up on March fourteenth. Uh, it's a Friday night, so everybody's getting ready for that. And then we will have our Sweethearts Dance on March twenty-first, and fifth grade is hosting Applebee's Flapjack fundraiser on March sixteenth from eight AM to ten AM. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mandalay PTA? Wanta L. PTA?
Good evening, I'm Jen Schnitzer on behalf of Wanta Elementary PTA. Hope all are well. Um, we have our music, uh, Musical Theater Club performing Finding Nemo next week, Tuesday and Wednesday, on the eleventh and twelfth, we're very excited, um, at the elementary school, and, um, they're already doing amazing. I was there for a little bit, uh, working there at the school, and I, and I heard them, so it was a good sneak preview, so we're very excited.
Hi, I'm Denise Arisa, speaking on behalf of the Wanta Elementary PTA. Um, last month, I had mentioned about doing donations for a cause. We had the American Cancer Society, for the month of January, we were able to raise ninety dollars of donations, which we will be contributing to the American Cancer Society, and they have agreed to match us, so then it'll be, the, the total donation will be a hundred and eighty dollars. Um, for the month of February, we are doing the American Heart Association, because it's the month of love, so, um, next month, we'll follow up with that and let you know the total that we were able to bring in on that. We also have the fifth grade clothing drive, that's happening, uh, Saturday, March eighth, from eight-thirty to thirty. Um, we have an Islanders game set up for March twenty-sixth, um, at seven o'clock, I believe it is, versus the Canucks. We also have an Applebee's Pancake Breakfast set up on March second, um, which is the fifth grade fundraiser. We also have, which is coming up, the Wanta Staff Volleyball Game, which we're all participating in, um, which is very exciting, I encourage everybody to come down and come cheer on the schools. Um, we also have, starting in April, a bingo night, which we will be hosting, um, once a week, I believe, once a month, once a month? No, one time, okay. So, and that's it for now.
Thank you so much. Um, six to twelve?
Hi, I'm Sophia Stipnoff, one of the co-presidents. Um, we're looking forward to our Islanders game, um, Saturday, uh, Sunday night on February twenty-third, it's the day, last day of break, so hopefully we get decent attendance. Um, the middle school book fair will be on March eleventh to the thirteenth. Books can be purchased with cash, credit cards, or e-wallet. E, e-wallet information will be coming out shortly. We've also added some new adult education classes, so be sure to look out for those on our member hub. In March, we're going to be doing a double good popcorn fundraiser, so support the six-twelve association and receive a delicious reward in return. We're also looking for, not looking, we also have our executive board elections open until March first. The open positions are VPs of fundraising and co-president, that would be somebody replacing me, because I have completed, almost completed, my second term, my second year. There is a Google form available on our weekly newsletter and socials, and that's it for six-twelve. Perfect. Can I do SEPTA?
Yep.
Mary Beth, you wanna come? Might as well, you're here. She wasn't gonna come, but she came, so. Oh, the retirees, yes. We're back with our second annual Raise Craze fundraiser, which runs until February eighteenth, and that is district-wide. Uh, Raise Craze is a fundraiser, fundraising through acts of kindness, there is no selling, just kindness. More details on this fundraiser is available in our weekly newsletter and socials. Do you wanna do that part?
Um, our next meeting is March twenty-sixth, we have Speaker Leslie DeChera with a presentation on assistive technology, and lastly, we're saving the date for our Night at the Races fundraiser, which is on May tenth, Saturday, May tenth, at the Merrick Golf Club Clubhouse.
Yeah, yeah, that's where we're going. Yep, and that's it for SEPTA, and can I do WPABC? Might as well just, keep rolling, right?
Keep going.
Um, the Herald will be featuring our Advocacy for, in Action Award. We, we will also be supporting upcoming chorus, band, and theater days. We already supported Orchestra Day, and we'll be doing that for Dance Day as well. First-time seniors in orchestra and chorus have received their senior, have received their gifts for senior recognition, band, theater, and dance received theirs in the fall. We're also covering the cost for guest speakers, conductors for orchestra in the spring. We're having our second flap, flapjack cabaret at Applebee's in Belmore on March ninth. Tickets will be available shortly. All these will be highlighted in our newsletter and socials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, PTA Council?
Probably should've just asked to stay up here, sorry. It's a lot of flapjack fundraisers. Um, so, uh, PTA Council, the big thing we have coming is the volleyball fundraiser, which many of you in here are gonna be battling it out. Uh, Forest Lake is trying to defend their title from last year. Um, it is Thursday, February twenty-seventh, it is in the high school gym, right here. Um, a bunch of staff from all the schools are gonna be coming. Tickets are only eight dollars, they're super affordable. All the money raised goes towards senior scholarships that we give out. Um, it is, we've sold a hundred and seventy tickets. Mrs. Vogler has a very ambitious goal of three hundred. Um, I'm hoping we can get close to that. Um, but again, uh, we'll be selling concessions, and we wanna thank Laura Dupkin-Mamishma, who's helping sponsor the event. She's really helping us out and facilitating a lot of the costs, so that we could really take the money and put it back towards the senior scholarships. Um, if there's any questions, you could reach out to me, um, myself, Chrissy Rothkop, who's my co-president, or Lindsay Vogler, who's our vice president of fundraising, but we hope to see everyone here. It is a community event, so it's not just restricted to the school, anybody can come. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Sports Booster Club? And the Wanta Foundation? Okay, now we're gonna open it up to public comments, if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns.
Hello. Uh, good evening, my name is Donna Allen, and I'm speaking tonight to formally request on behalf of my son Nicholas, that he be allowed to attend the Nassau Bosse's Long Island High School for the Arts, LISA, musical theater program, for the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school years. Nicholas is currently a sophomore at Wanta High, with a deep commitment to the performing arts, a field he intends to pursue in college and beyond. His passion for musical theater is evident, not only within the Wanta School District, but also in his extracurricular activities. Over the past four years, Nicholas has participated in all Wanta Theater productions, taken on significant roles in Descendants Matilda, Peter the Starcatcher, Jekyll and Hyde, Puffs, and he is currently starring as King Arthur in the upcoming high school production of Spamalot. Outside of school, Nicholas has performed in thirty-six various theatrical productions since two thousand eighteen. This is an impressive achievement, since he accomplished this while consistently maintaining honor roll status academically. Nicholas has been involved with second-stage productions, Merrick Theater, Saint Francis Theater Group, Culture Arts Playhouse, and the Path Fund Organization, where he recently performed at The Cutting Room in New York City with Rockers on Broadway. With Culture Arts Playhouse, in addition to numerous young people theater productions, Nicholas performed in multiple mainstage shows with feature actors of all ages, and has been cast in supportive roles in lieu of the ensemble, which is a high achievement at such a young age. Nicholas' growth over the years has been impressive, as he has earned more intense, challenging, and dramatic roles with deeper, more mature subject matters, such as a chorus line, Pippin, and Rent. Recently, he played the lead role of Billy Flynn in Chicago. His dedication to theater is unwavering, and he manages to perform in three to four productions, all at the same time, while balancing schoolwork, friendships, and family life. On a personal note, Nicholas is an exceptionally mature young man, with a presence that conveys wisdom beyond his years. He is independent, well-rounded, and maintains a calm demeanor that allows him to handle stressful situations with ease. His confidence when performing on stage is captivating, as he fully transforms into the characters he portrays. I invite you to experience this firsthand in his latest role as Rodolfo in the mainstage production of Matilda at Culture Arts Playhouse in Sayosset. This part is typically cast with an adult actor, however, Nicholas was selected over the older performance based on his talent and abilities. Nicholas is also deeply involved in his school community, being inducted into the Honor Society, National Thespian Honor Society, and the Trium Music Honor Society. He participates in the school's war club and is currently enrolled in AP and honors classes. In addition, he is a member of the Anora Levo, Levoje Chorus, and recently performed at NISMA and Nassau All County Music Festivals. Nicholas is respected in the theater community, in part to his strong work ethic and impressive theatrical capabilities. Theater has become so much more than a hobby or a club. Where was I? Than a club. To Nicholas, it is a lifestyle of acceptance and growth, that has become a fundamental part of who he is and who he is becoming. As I stated earlier, Nicholas intends to pursue musical theater in college, and the Career and Technical Education, CTE, program at LISA, would provide him specialized training and experience needed to succeed in this competitive field. Applying for performing arts higher education programs is an extremely intense process, and the specific support that LISA programs offer will help guide Nicholas with auditions and provide opportunities that expose him to the industry in which a traditional high school just cannot offer. I've spoken to parents and students who participated in the LISA program last year, and they have shared only positive experience about the valuable exposure and support they receive from the LISA curriculum and counselors who are well-versed in the arts. As a Wanta Hum, Wanta High School alumni and member of the Wanta community for over forty years, I understand the exceptional opportunities our school district offers. My involvement with the Wanta Performing Arts Booster Club, the six-twelve PTA organizations, and my regular volunteer work to support the arts reflect my dedication to this community. I have seen firsthand how my older child, who for many years benefited from the Wanta High School, Wanta School District Education Services, has gone to flourish in college. I am confident that Nicholas will excel academically in his core classes at Wanta High and within the Wanta Theater Program, while thriving at LISA, should he have the opportunity. Members of the board, as strong advocates for education and as supporters of Wanta students, I respectfully ask you to consider allowing Nicholas to follow his dream and reach his fullest potential by attending LISA in the fall. This opportunity would provide him with the tools and support necessary to succeed in his artistic journey. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Allen, and I am a sophomore here at Wanta High School. I would like to share my reason as to why I would like to attend the Long Island High School for the Arts, also known as LISA, in my upcoming junior and senior years. Musical theater is one of the biggest aspects of my life, and I don't know who I would be without it. It has helped shaped who I am as a human being and gave me the confidence that I didn't know I had. For me, the chance to go to LISA is an opportunity of a lifetime. When I went to the One Plus One Day with Jamie Lynn and the LISA Open House, I've never felt more at home. Musical theater is what I intend to pursue in college and hopefully as a career. Attending LISA would help prepare me for the necessary steps to achieve the school. Theater has become more than just a hobby or an after-school club, it is a part of me. I have been performing on stage for over eight years, starting in third grade, when I did my first performance at eight years old. The second I stepped on stage, I knew that this is who I was and this is what I was meant to do, even at such a young age. Since then, I am cast in over thirty-six productions at multiple theaters such as Second Stage Studios, Merrick Theater, Saint Francis Theater Group, Culture Arts Playhouse, Rockers on Broadway in New York City, and the Wanta Middle School and Wanta High School Theater Groups. Being a part of the Wanta Theater Program has helped my passion for the art grow and evolve, but at this point in my journey, I feel I need to advance to another level of training. Speaking to friends and other students who currently attend LISA, they have shared stories of their exposure to the various components of the industry, and how it, and how it has helped them, guided them towards their college and career paths. Throughout my time here at Wanta, I have excelled academically by consistently achieving honor roll, participating in multiple AP and honors courses, and was inducted into leadership groups such as the Honor Society, National Thespian Honor Society, the Trium Musical Honor Society, and I am a member of the Wanta War Club, Anora Levoje, and have recently performed in NISMA and All County Music Festivals. If given the opportunity to attend LISA, I would be extremely grateful and would use the experience, the experience to improve my craft to its highest potential. Quoting the musical Wicked, "Everyone deserves a chance to fly." Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Avery Farrar, and like Nick, I also hope to attend the Long Island High School for the Arts in my junior and senior year. I am a sophomore at Wantaw High School, and I have been involved with Wantaw Theater Department since middle school. Musical theater has always been a big part of who I am and who I want to be in the future. It has always been a passion of mine to perform and to perfect my skills as a performer. After experiencing a day at LISA when attending my One Plus One Day with Jamie Lynn, I was in awe of the program and the quality of the school and what they offer for young performers. I was captivated with the rigor and the seriousness of the training, and after learning more about the program from students here who also attend LISA, my mind was set on the intention of going there and honing in on my skills and talents as an actor. While Wantaw's Drama Club has given me a wonderful experience and many new friendships, I am excited at the possibility to focus on skills at a specialized school that will help me with my future career, and to bring those skills back with me to Wantaw's productions. I'm very grateful for your time, and thank you for listening.
All right, we're going to talk about LISA a little bit more. We really like it there. But I'm Jamie Lynn Karaki.
And I'm Riley Smith. We are current seniors here at Wantaw, as well as at the Long Island High School for the Arts. We are musical theater majors at LISA, and we just wanted to share with you all of our experiences at LISA and express our gratitude for the opportunity Wantaw gave us by allowing us to attend LISA and advocate for the chance for Nick and Avery and all future students to have the same opportunities we were given. We were in this exact same spot two years ago, going through the LISA application process and fighting for a chance to go.
I have been performing with Nick and Avery since I was in 5th grade and they were in 3rd grade, and since then, I have had the pleasure to get to know them as performers and people, and I have seen their talents. I've seen their talents and passions grow exponentially since then, and it would be a shame for them to miss out on the opportunity to receive the unmatched training that is offered. It is rare for high school students to have the choice to receive daily training for their passions with groups of other like-minded students. Since attending LISA, I wake up every morning ecstatic about going to school. My attendance has greatly improved, and I have grown so much as a performer and a person. Since I started LISA, I have performed at Radio City Music Hall for thousands of people at a Rockettes performance, been part of two musicals, two dance showcases, countless workshops with industry professionals, including casting directors who cast current Broadway shows and current Broadway actors, and I've taken many classes such as music theory, acting for TV and the camera, theater history and repertoire, audition and monologue techniques, and many different styles of dance.
One of the productions we put on was The Who's Tommy. On the first day of school, our teacher, Chris Brick, explained to us why he chose this show that was so unfamiliar to us. The show follows the life of a young boy named Tommy who became deaf, mute, blind after a traumatic event, but he later discovers his talent for pinball, causing him to gain fame and eventually return home. Enlightened, Chris explained to us that he believes it is so important for stories like this to be told, especially through theater. He wanted to give us a chance to do such an important show while we were all so young. Our production of The Who's Tommy was the first full musical LISA had ever put on, and it was so successful that this year, we were able to do two musicals. The first musical that we put on was called Year in Town, which we performed last weekend. We had a resident artist come into Music Direct and show the show, who works at AMDO, which is the third most represented school on Broadway, as well as we had professional costume designers who currently work on countless productions in New York City.
And we are now diving into rehearsals for a new show that we are workshopping called Balloon Boy, written by Billy Reesey. To workshop a new musical means that the writer is going to be working with us to change and perfect his show. Billy Reesey has had a number of his shows run off-Broadway, and this is an incredible opportunity that I am honestly still shocked that we get to do.
I was also a part of Broadway Supports LISA, where a group of students are given the chance to perform an opening act and sing backup for Broadway performers. Last year was also the 50th anniversary of LISA, so our teachers, Chris Brick and Lara Baganunias, with the help of the Billy Joel Foundations and members of Billy Joel's personal team, conceived the idea of a new show titled Big Shot. This show follows the story of a star's rise and fall in stardom, set to the music of Billy Joel. Getting the chance to build a musical from the ground up was such an incredible experience and a great sneak peek into what the professional world will be like.
Our teachers treat us like professionals, preparing us for our future careers and more currently, college auditions. Before attending LISA, I was not confident in my abilities at all and thought I would never have a shot in the theater industry, but our teachers at LISA truly care about each and every one of us and have taught us how to use our talents to become our best selves. Without LISA, I definitely would not be pursuing a career in musical theater. I cannot imagine a life where I'm not doing this. When I'm on stage or in rehearsal, I am truly my happiest and best self. The first week of school last year, our teacher made us all sing a song for our class to use as a benchmark to measure our growth. Looking back on those performances, without a doubt, every single one of us has improved. I can confidently say that the trajectory of mine and the fifteen other students in my class's lives have been truly changed for the better due to LISA and our teachers. Our teachers will do everything in their power to make sure they show up every day, no matter what, but on the rare occasion we walk into class and see a substitute, we are all devastated to find out that we won't be able to continue whatever we're working on. I have never been in a class where my classmates and I are not thrilled to find out that there is a substitute.
We have two teachers at LISA, and they both have worked professionally as performers, and when they are not teaching, they continue to perform. This is extremely beneficial, because that means that they can change what they are teaching us based on how the industry constantly changes.
Going back to college auditions, the preparation and support that LISA has offered us has led to our extreme success throughout this rigorous process. The average acceptance rate into musical theater BFA programs is two to five percent. I personally have heard back from only two of my schools, and I have gotten into both of them.
I am very lucky and grateful to say I have been accepted into three musical theater programs, including Boston Conservatory, which has around a five percent acceptance rate. I truly don't think I could have ever been accepted without LISA. The alumni success at LISA is very high, and the employment rate of alumni is around ninety-seven percent, and there are currently many past students on Broadway.
I see so much of myself in Avery. I see her go through the exact same things I was going through at her age. She is insanely talented, and I see incredible potential in her. With the outlet to try and fail and learn, Avery will shine. Nick and I have seen each other through many phases of our lives, the one constant being we always shared the stage. The friends, like Nick, I have made through theater have played a huge role in my love and passion for it, and I can't express how important it is for young artists to find their people. I have made so many connections through LISA to older actors and younger. The community that exists at LISA is the best part. Theater is a career with more rejection than anything else, and having groups of people alongside you doing the exact same things is so important. Without LISA, I truly do not know what I would be doing with my life, and I'm honestly not even sure if I would have made it through high school. I would still be the shy, completely insecure girl who is completely scared to even take up space, instead of the described by Nick and Avery, real go-getter, compassionate, dedicated, and outgoing person that I am today. I could go on and on and on about LISA for hours, but for the sake of time, I'll stop there. But I love talking about LISA almost as much as I love going there, so please, if there's any questions, ask. And I am forever grateful that this was a school I am able to attend, and I would beat myself up if I didn't do everything I could to help Avery and Nick. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Leandra. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Andalucia Navetta, also requesting that she be allowed to enter the Long Island High School for the Arts. Andalucia has a very long resume of performing arts. She has been a competitive dancer since she was five. She now teaches dance classes. She's had the opportunity to dance in Disney World and many other wonderful locations. She's participated in musical theater since she was very, very young. She also travels to Queens five nights a week during the summer for a musical theater program there. And she is always creating. She has been called a brilliant, gifted, elite writer. She has won multiple awards for her writing. She has recently won the Walt Whitman Poetry Contest, and also was selected for a poem right here in Wantaw for the Memorial Day Parade when she was in 7th grade. But it is not the musical theater program that she is wanting to participate in, it is the film program. She has taken all of her experience and her creativity and learned to apply it to the screen. And I think that participating in this program will allow her the opportunity to work with more industry professionals that are not entirely of the same caliber that would be available in a regular high school for the filmmaking program. She is really on her own doing this. This is, we came from Queens, so we've only been in Wantaw for the last three or four years. So I'm just learning about all of these opportunities for the arts for her here, and I'm very grateful to some of her friends who are here tonight, who have helped her with this process, invited her to the One to One Day and the LISA Open House that she is trying to get into. She's been working directly with her guidance counselors. She has been working very hard to get the classes that she needs, because she's also in the capstone program. So she wants to continue to work on her education and get as many credits as she can, so that she can participate in LISA as well. And she's done all of this with a learning disability, so I am extremely proud to have such a gifted child, and I don't want to go on and on. I'm sure you've heard much about the LISA program already, but I'm here on behalf of her, and I think she has a couple of things that she wants to say, too. We won't take up too much more of your time.
Hi. My name is Andalucia Navetta. I'm a sophomore at Wantaw High School, and like my peers, I would love to attend LISA, but for film. For years, I was very torn on what I wanted my future to be. I didn't really understand what I could do with my hobbies and my talents. That was until I became immersed in the world of film. And since then, I have gone from writing scripts to participating in film camps and even practicing editing. I attended LISA's One Plus One Day with my friend Riley Wood, and I completely fell in love with the program. I saw my entire future planned out in front of me. I met a very tight-knit group of students who all worked very hard together to create something amazing. When I was there, they were going through the process of filming a almost mockumentary, like, office-style TV show pilot, which was very amazing. I was allowed to help with that, and while I was there, I also saw the amount of high-quality equipment that was available to the students there. When I talked to the teacher, I was told about all of the access that they have to online writing programs to help make scripts, which I feel would very much benefit me, which is something I would not have in a regular high school program. So I would really love to attend LISA for film. Thank you.
Thank you all. Do you want to?
Yeah, so thank you all for advocating for attending LISA. It's in process. I had a chance to speak to some of you, you know, all that, you know, take care of your applications, go through the process with the guidance department, and then we kind of go from there. So it's all in process, and Mr. Museo and the guidance folks will certainly keep you updated as we progress through the process, but we appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight to advocate for that.
And also, on behalf of the Board, we appreciate all you guys coming out to talk about your wonderful experiences there. We're so happy to hear that. We're so glad that you're having such a good experience there. Thank you so much. All right, everybody, we're going to close out. We'll see you all next month, right? Have a great vacation.